Okay, my line.
Beckett, do you have your phone on silent?
Yes.
I'm just picking on Rebecca. We were in an all-day meeting together yesterday and we had to set the same table. I felt kinda sorry for her.
It was awful. They played games, they had breaks, then more games. I'm not a ga- you know, I'm 64 years old. I don't wanna play more games. I'm that type of per- I know.
I know, I'm...
It's just like, can we just?
I am too. I am too Rebecca. I try to get into it, but I am too.
On that note, I've got 6 o'clock. I'd like to call the Warsaw Town Council session. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all. You see it? Okay, council, first order of business, we have the consent agenda and I think we have one change we need to offer.
Under new business, A, I'd like to, we're not gonna be able to do the presentation, budget presentation tonight, so I'd like to change that for us to discuss rescheduling the budget presentation to next Thursday, April 17th, at 6 o'clock, if we can discuss it at that time.
All right. We have that note. Council, entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the change.
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda with the change.
We have a second?
Beckett.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. We're going right into our public hearing and this is a really exciting, this is really just procedural. I'm not gonna read the, the public notice tonight. It was advertised according to law. It's here for public record. But this is for the conditional use permit for Rapid Community College, the educational foundation, to allow the operation of a proposed vocational training facility on tax map 16A43A24. The proposed development is located within a R-12, so it's gonna require a conditional use permit. So, we'll open that up for any public comment. I see there's no public comment here. Did we receive any, anything through email or anything, or the mail?
We did not.
All right. Public comment is now closed. Council, is there any discussion about the conditional use permit approved? Really just a procedural tactic. This'll give the college the, the green light to do what they need to do for the building.
Where exactly is that? Is that, that piece of property where the people doing the road kept all our equipment?
The staging, it is. It wa- it is.
Okay.
Yes.
To the right of the building there, of the big house or whatever?
Correct. If you're facing the Chin House, it's to the right. Yes. I think the, the little bench, there's a, there's a bench out there too and you'll see a, I think there's a sign. There's might be a...
Originally I thought it was back behind that where the parking lot was back there, but I saw this picture and I...
It's gonna look really nice on the record.
Yeah.
And planning, planning commission did meet about that.
All right. What was the planning commission's recommendation?
I don't have my notes.
Well, that's okay. They, they, they made a motion to approve with, with no extra, no conditions.
Okay. All right.
Yes.
Was it unanimous?
It was.
All right. Well, if there's no other discussion, let's come out of public hearing and we'll address that down under new business. All right. Again, we're into the public comments section and I don't have anyone that would like to speak here tonight, so we'll close that. And this is gonna be a really quick meeting, guys. I'm, it's, we're gonna fly through this, I suspect. Going through the mayor's report, I generally defer my comments, but I did have two unrelated, yet related issues that was kinda cool. I had two people know, reach out to me last week, at the beginning of the week, wanting to know about the faces of the trees, the enchanted forest, right? And so they wound up bringing their grandkids from two different families, two different towns, and both had a ball, spent money at the restaurants, ate lunch, got popcorn, and just had a great time. So, that's just really cool. Okay. Since Mr. Questonberry is not with us tonight, we have Mrs. Coates and she will be giving the town manager's report.
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. So, first on the list, the budget creation. I'd like to, to thank all of our department heads and council member, members for another successful budget process. This is, this has probably been one of the most difficult budget seasons we've had. We still showcase that our town is in fair terms of rates and taxes. All expenses are covered and reserves do remain strong. And of course, we look forward to, to the presentation on April 17th and look forward to also working on next year's budget together. I have a mural project update. Unfortunately, we did not receive the rendering we had hoped. The, the mural is slated to go on the daily, the old daily building where Big City Chuck Wagon is. So hopefully we'll have that next month. I, we didn't get that as anticipated. However, I think it's, I think it's gonna be a huge improvement to that blank slate. I think John Mural is his name. He's going to come up with something real creative, so we'll look forward to that.
We've been working on a town council retreat. Many councils and boards across the Commonwealth and beyond participate in annual retreats wherein they work on team building, strategic planning, review laws and regulations, and build camaraderie amongst their members. We have reached out and had a, had a brief call with the Virginia Institute of Government at UVA, and we have asked them to work with us in our resched, in our schedule to kind of get a retreat together. It'd be like a four to five hour trip. Usually it's off-site and it's something that, it's something that's very informative, but it also, like we said, builds camaraderie. So, we, we should have some more information for you on that and probably next month's meeting.
So, if I can just add, Missy, it's getting to be a much more complicated world and there are things that have changed, some things that certainly I'm not aware of. So, I asked Joseph and Missy to look into this as an educational piece. We can craft it how we think we need it to look like and it will be, what we'll do is we'll get a, a package proposed, kind of an outline of what it would look, you know, cover, talk to you guys, see what topics you might want to talk about, right, and propose it to the council in a more formal manner. But, yeah, so that's what that's about.
Thank you, Randy. Next update, the Woodland Heights subdivision. We have been working with our attorney regarding the subdivision by applicants Gregory Packet and Vertical Builders. The subdivision will have no more than nine homes located on the former Bill Northern property. The subdivision did not follow proper application methods initially. So, we did receive paperwork. However, it wasn't what we require. I'm currently working with the project coordinator with Vertical Builders to schedule a pre-application meeting so we can get all that nailed down and so that they'll understand what's required of them in order to proceed. Let's see. Like I said, we will work with them to tell them like what we expect. We do plan to require approved landscaping, paved driveways, and possibly, possibly sidewalks, if that, if that's possible, lighting and stormwater as well. We hope to have a resolution regarding this soon and we'll keep you up to date on that. We have, we actually have a meeting set for April 17th with the project coordinator. So, next meeting we'll have a little more on that. The purchase contract of the county property, I believe they're having a public hearing this evening on that. We have been made aware of a proposed purchase contract by a residential developer on the land owned by the county within the town limits located along Hamilton Boulevard. We are not aware of any official plans, nor have we, nor have any plans been submitted to our office, but it seems to be a large subdivision with a small commercial component. As soon as we receive formal documentation, we will reach out to the planning commission and council to begin the review process. So, as many of you may have seen coming in this evening, we are under renovation in our kitchen and supply closet area. Let's see. Unfortunately, you know, being, as it is an older building, a residential, an older residential building, the space was not ADA compliant. And due to that, not to mention, we didn't have full-size anything. The, there was plumbing that needed to be redone that wasn't working properly. So, we have decided to, to renovate that area and combine the space into a small break room kitchen area. And again, I apologize for any mess or any inconvenience that that causes. Obviously, you can see it's, it's a bit of a mess this evening.
Wow, it looked pretty good.
I mean, I...
It's a lot bigger with the walls down.
It, it is. And they also, we, we got to raise the ceiling up, so, so I think it's just gonna provide even for better acoustics and just like we said...
That swamp smell will go away?
Yeah, I know. That's having to have the plumbing, 'cause I think that was the old bathroom where there was actually, you know, the spot for the toilet sewer and everything. So, when they were capping that off, that was real nice. And the, what came out of some of those things were, it was kinda interesting. So, we're looking forward to it. I do, I do think it's gonna be a big improvement for, for everyone. So, we're looking forward to the community market starting this weekend. Starts this Saturday, April 12th, from 9 to 2 at the Warsaw Town Park. That's, for, for all of you who might not know, it's right across from Expresso, near the Saddlery Building. Please try to come out and support our local vendors. I, I think we have some new vendors this year and it's, it's a great thing for the community and for all the businesses, just foot traffic in general. So, we're looking forward to that.
Thank you, Missy. Any questions for our assistant town manager? Any of the topics?
Questions about Woodland Heights?
Yes, sir.
So, it's not currently paved, but we're gonna require that they put sidewalks and paved driveways?
Well, we are requiring the paved driveways. That is something that with any new single family dwelling within the town, we will require. The sidewalks are something that they could proffer, like if they, they want to, to add, add on, they could. We would like lighting and landscaping and we are working on getting that brought into the VDOT system. So, it's not necessarily that the road will remain gravel. So, that is something that Joseph and I are working on, but it does take time to get that, get that done. So, we can update you next time on that, if you'd like.
Okay. And did you say the community market was moving back over where the boat?
Unfort- no, unfortunately it's not because we're still having all the construction at 74 Main. So, it, it will be at the town park as it was last year.
Okay.
Kind of in front of Oyster Shoals and by the Saddlery and stuff. People seem to, seem to gravitate towards that area right now, so it's just good for, for the businesses and for the vendors that are...
Yeah, I agree.
...at the market, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, Bobby, with those, if these homes come to pass, that's gonna give us more, I don't know if leverage is the right word, but leverage to get it brought into the system, to get some kind of treatment on it. Okay. Anything else for the, our assistant town manager? Police chief report.
Sir, thank you, Mayor, Town Council. Pleasure being here. Our, our monthly activity report is in your file. We were having cash issues again when we pulled the numbers in, so I think you're missing this. Total calls of service for the month was 271 and a total of 26 traffic stops, which is down by about 60% from previous months because one of our officers has been on military leave that likes to get out there and write tickets. Couple of exciting things that we launched last month. As far as our social media presence, we, we launched the Warsaw PD 411. If you've been on our Facebook page, it's been a pretty big success so far. And then Fast Back Fridays with the Chief, we just put out just general knowledge, information. Anytime something pops up, we, we bring it under the Warsaw PD 411 platform. We'd like the town council to know as well, we applied for two grants that were due, one was due yesterday and one a couple weeks before. One is a 100% funded grant, wellness grant for police, which we put in some equipment to, some chairs and some raising desks and a massage chair, just so officers have a way to decompress and make sure their form and function is, after sitting in a car all day, is proper. And that grant allowed up at $30,000 and pretty much free money if we get it. And I took it to $29,975. So, hopefully there... And also, across the board, there's a burn justice grant that comes out every year, covers up to 75% of equipment needs, equipment and software needs for agencies. It is competitive. I wrote a dissertation, so hopefully we, we can pick it up, but put in there things that we generally can't afford on the regular radios, computers, things like that. So, my hope is that we get awarded that grant. Finally, it has been one year... One month, one week since I started here. I'm still here. I'm excited and glad and like the direction we've come since I've started. I am working on a one-year review to present to the town manager and assistant manager and then to the town council. So, I hope to have that for you before the next meeting. That again is also a dissertation, so trying to condense it from like, the 30 pages that right now, maybe five or six, so it's easy to read.
Easy to read.
I might be, I might be a little over on the 30, but, so I hope to have all of that by, before next town council meeting. So, with that, any questions? That's, it's been a great ride so far.
Maybe I'm, I'm just a bit confused. I'm looking at your report and I'm seeing this proba- the probation violations and it looked like it's from the beginning of March, third, end of March, and it looked like it's the same address.
Say, that's probation and parole. They call us one, two, three, sometimes, three times a day. So, when the people report to probation and parole, to see the parole officers, sometimes they get violated. So, that would be PB 15 and then we go pick them up, or the sheriff's office will go pick them up, take them straight to jail. Sometimes they show up and they have warrants out for them and that's, one month of March, we had a lot of that. So, they have a warrant out for them, the PD and the sheriff's office respond there and take them to jail.
Good question, Ralph. Ralph probably thought it was a residence on mainstream.
That's a good question. That, so, yeah, we visit...
Somebody has been in a lot of trouble, 'cause in fact, I'm thinking, certainly couldn't be the same person, but...
So, probation and parole, yeah. So, there's some days where they're two, three times a day.
Well, that answers that question.
So, they like to keep us busy.
Thank you for clarifying.
Of course.
Any other questions for the chief?
I have one. Have you heard any complaints or has there been any incidents coming out of the college with the library sign so close to the road? That was brought, that was brought to my attention a couple of times. It's...
Have not.
It's blocking the view coming...
Library sign too close to the road?
Trying to get to the sidewalk?
I can check it out.
I haven't actually done that to see, but people have told me and it's, it's hard to see the oncoming traffic.
I have not, sir, but I will definitely check into that.
Thanks.
Any else for the chief?
Thank you.
Well, chief, it's been a good year. I'm glad, I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you're part of Warsaw. I know your first year's been kinda boring, but I promise the second will be, you know, a lot more interesting.
Yeah, wait. It's making work safer.
All right. Director of Public Works, I don't see Jesse here tonight, but his report is in the packet. Counsel, any questions about the pa- anything on his report? Missy, is there anything that's warrants highlighting?
Yes, we actually had the wastewater treatment plant tour Wednesday at 1:30 and, no, there's, there's, yes, there's, there's numbers in here and things. If you have any questions, certainly ask. I'll be happy to discuss that. I just wanted to bring up that we did, did the tour. That was offered to planning commission and council. Unfortunately, it was one planning commission member and Ralph attended and some of our staff here, but it, it was just wonderful. Mr. Sanders, Mr. Schools, Tanner France, and Mark Hall, they did a wonderful job of presenting to all of us and it was just really informative. I was, I was highly impressed. I think Ralph and Molly, they, they were as well. So, I just wanted to say that was great. We decided to offer another very soon, maybe something that maybe fits into some of the schedules a little bit better, maybe a little later in the day, and also still do the tour of the Strawberry Hill tract. So, I just wanted to say that during that time, that we will be offering it again and how proud I was of our team. Ralph, did you?
I wanna piggyback on what, about the tour yesterday because I, I took it, took that tour maybe a couple or so years ago and, and I learn more each time I go. And I really, I think, you know, as being the committee chairman of the public work, I probably need to be, get more involved. But, it was very informative. Everybody, all the staff, all the guys there were so knowledgeable and answered all of our questions and, and the processes that this thing that goes, everything goes through from the time it leaves a house until the time it gets to Thomas G. Creek. I thought they did a great job and, and I get, and all of you know, they, they have to document so many different things that they do. They, it's all these tests and, and samples and there's so many things that they have to, to keep, keep up with and mainly for DEQ, DEQ. And I, I just wanna commend these guys for all the work that they do, you know, and, and of course having to come there on weekends, you know, also to work, to do the tests and to keep up with everything. So, my hats are off to them and for all the work that they did and, and keeping up with, with what's going on. And another thing is, you know, we're talking about age, age of the, of the plant now and having to do some, some renov- some changes, some replacements, parts and things like that. But, again, they're, they're doing a great job down there.
Well, I'm glad you and Molly got to go. It's been, it's been a few years since I've been down there. So, I think another trip, maybe a different time, Dave, would be a really good idea.
Yeah, I think we're gonna try to schedule that soon. Things look amazing down there. So, I think it'd be a great time, the time of year even. So, we'll get something together.
Just can't swim in the ponds, right?
You don't wanna swim in that pond.
It's just, the color...
In Thomas Creek maybe, but not there.
The color kinda turns you off a little bit, but, yeah.
All right, moving on. Council committee reports. Are there any committees that met this past month?
Yes, Personnel Committee did meet in a closed session. The purpose was, I guess, I don't know if everybody knows, I know the new people don't, but a couple employees that we have here, the town manager and chief of police, yearly we, we do evaluation of their, of their work and things like that, you know, to, just to, you know, keep up like, like hopefully they're dealing with their people underneath them. And as chief said, he's been here a year now. We did, we did evaluation of him, you know, and chief, it came out pretty good.
I'm still here, so that's a bonus.
But if anybody has any questions about, since it was in a closed session, Personnel matter, I'd be glad to talk with you about it if you want or have any questions.
All right. Planning Commission report, we kinda heard that was the...
Yeah, just wanna add that Missy did find out that another class had opened up for those of us that wanted to take the planning commissioners' class. So, that'd be what, August?
Yeah, it starts in August, runs through October, and that's a virtual class. I'm, I'm also going to take it and several of the folks and, and so, yeah, we're excited for that, so.
I think that's great. Okay, good. Mr. Vice Mayor, the Northern regional jail report.
Yeah, we actually did meet yesterday. It's put off till next Wednesday. As you know, that's the day of the governing bodies dinner. We'll meet at 4 o'clock and then join all those that are coming. Hopefully everybody's received an invitation, both virtually or, you know, electronically and in the mail. If you haven't, all you need to do is, is respond one of the ways. You don't have to do it both ways, but if you haven't done so and you, and you still wanna go, try to get it forwarded tomorrow. I think they, they wanna make plans, you know, for the number of people coming. What you get is, they have a very small, short presentation, probably much shorter than having Michelle's there instead of Ted, but much shorter. But, it tells you about how the jails, how the prisons deal and so forth.
Okay.
But, everything's, you know, for you.
I mailed mine today.
What's, what's the date on that?
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, okay.
All right. Moving along, old business. Missy, 74 Main Street, do we have anything new to talk about?
We, we do not. We're, I mean, there's been some activity, but we're still waiting on the, the electrical upgrades by Dominion and having the pole set. So, once that's done, we can, we can make some headway with the HVAC.
Okay. Any questions on 74 Main? All right. Well, replacement project.
Yes, so just actually today, we were trying to reach out to another company to get a quote. We've primarily been dealing with Sydner and the cost, I mean, obviously keeps going up year after year. So, we did get a new quote from another company that came in quite a bit less, I think about nine, 950, 150,000, as opposed to, I think, like a 1.2. Of course, the project still has to go out to bid, but we're just doing our due diligence to try to see, you know, who we've been working with is, is in, in the realm or is giving us a fair, fair deal on that price. So, still in the planning process on that.
Any questions on our well replacement that we don't need, but must do? All right. DHCD housing project, any news there?
We meet the third Tuesday of the month. Currently, the rehab projects, the three homes, they, that's in the works right now. Actually, we have several homes being worked on presently and the complete rebuilds will be going out to bid shortly, so.
All right. Good stuff. Okay, so we're back down to the Rapid Community College Health Science Building, conditional use permit. We've followed the procedure. We've had our public hearing. There's plans if anyone would like to see them. But what we are looking for, counsel, is a motion to approve a conditional use permit for Rapid Community College to run a training, a training facility in a R-12 zone.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? I'm just very excited about that. Okay, so, new business, council. Again, we could not do the budget presentation tonight, but there are certain time restrictions and deadlines that a locality has to follow with approving a budget. And so, to stay within the cadence, next Thursday on the 17th at 6 p.m. really fits the plans without us upsetting the apple cart. So, if we could get a majority of council here next Thursday, we could go through the public presentation. Joseph will, Joseph and Missy can present the, the budget as it, as it is, have it available for the public to inspect in a timely manner, and then we can move on with our public hearing in May.
What was the date again?
It's next Thursday, Ralph. It's...
April 17th.
April, thank you, April 17th.
At what time?
6 p.m. Does that sound, I hope, favorable with, with council?
Yep. It is to be.
Missy, I, I guess a reminder will be sent out or an email?
Of course, of course.
Maybe the mayor will text you. Maybe you won't.
Oh, that was, that was, that was personal.
He has the numbers now. I should've caught that.
Do I need Farren to forward the text to me now?
It, and it will be adequately.
Okay.
We've discussed it.
For the new, for Bobby and Daphne, just so you know, Paul is our politi- our, what's it called?
Room manager.
Thank you. He keeps me from going to jail for making mistakes, so. All right, council. So, with that in mind, our next regular meeting is May 8th and we need to schedule the public hearing to present the budget officially to the public and let the public have their, their commentary. So, what I'm looking for is a motion to approve a public hearing for Thursday, May 8th at 6 p.m. for budget presentation to the public.
I'll make that.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Those opposed? Thank you all for being flexible. Okay, is there any other new business any council member would like to bring forth?
We went back to wastewater. I'm sorry, I just thought about it. It said in the notes that two of the three sand filters were replaced. So, do we have to replace the third two or what we're just working on?
They, they weren't replaced. So, we had someone working on them and, and we were thankful that this person is extremely knowledgeable and was able to fix two of them. So, they are, they are, they are, well, one is working, fully working, I think operational. And I think we're waiting on a part for another. So, I mean, we, we're actually in way better shape.
Better shape than we were.
Yes, yes. That's, which is great news. There's several other needs that are going to be a little costly, but, you know, it's great news that the sand filter was able to be repaired. Ralph, you saw it in working order. It's an amazing site. So.
All right. Any other new business? All right. I told you it'd be a quick meeting. Closing comments. Ralph, you want to kick us off?
Yes. Again, look forward to our community market coming up Saturday, the first of the, first of many. Hopefully, the weather will hold off for us and we'll, it'll be a good day for it. And I would encourage everybody, if you can, go to the governing bodies jail board meeting. It's a really, a nice meeting, a nice dinner. They give you some information. They recognize some of the, some of the employees and it's really a nice evening, nice event. And it's here in Warsaw, next to the Tap House this year. So, it's not far to go. So, just would encourage everybody that can to try, try to attend that.
All right. Rebecca?
Looking forward to the Community College breaking ground. That's just great for our town. Wonderful. I think she said July something.
Yeah, the summer.
Some type of ribbon cutting. That's great. Sorry I missed the tour. I would love to be able to take off work. No time's really any better for me than, we'll just have to wait and see. But, I hope you schedule it.
Yeah.
I know, seriously.
Well, yeah, I think there's some leeway there. It went really well. So, I mean, I think Frankie Sanders, the manager, I think he'd be happy to schedule something, little individual tours or maybe a couple of people at a time. So.
Try to do it again as a group would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bobby?
It's just good seeing everybody again tonight and thanks for answering my questions. Hope I didn't ask too many.
Never.
Yeah?
No.
So, that's all I have to say.
Save it for Joseph. Save it for him. I'm just teasing.
Daphne?
Yeah, like everyone else, I'm sorry I missed the treatment plant tour, but I would like to go and see it. And congrats to the chief for being here for a year.
Thank you.
John?
Me too. Sorry I missed the tour. I was at the Virginia Regional Jail conference working. I want to note while we were there, talking about the regional jail and the governing bodies dinner, I do hope you all attend. But, our guest speaker was Lieutenant Governor, went some years. And I had the pleasure of riding the elevator with her and actually being able to speak to her. And she actually recognized us in her speech. I know there's a particular media presence currently, but at, at times they try to reach out to the active, active governor, but she had nothing but nice things to say. Which brings me to my next point. You guys at this table, I want to thank each one of y'all for working with y'all at no, no pay, may I add. Anyone can get on Facebook or stand at that podium and say things that they think or they've heard or don't have any facts, only have opinion on. But, you all make decisions based on facts. And, and I owe y'all. So, I want to read y'all a quote that I have by my, it's by my time clock as we walk in every day. Every employee will see this because, and it's Teddy Roosevelt's quote from the Sorbonne in Paris in 1910. And it reads, "It's not the critic who counts, not the one who points out how the strong man stumbled or how the doer of deeds might have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred with sweat and dust and blood, who strives valiantly, who earns and comes short again and again, who knows the great enthusiasms, the great devotions, and spends himself in a worthy cause, who if he wins knows the triumph of high achievement, and if he fails, at least fails while daringly, daring greatly so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who know neither victory nor defeat." So, I thank each of you for daring greatly and be, actually being in the arena.
All right. Teddy Roosevelt, that's a good one. Rebecca?
Good meeting. And Paul, I want to go to the dinner.
Are you bringing a plus one?
I enjoyed the meeting. Good meeting.
Okay. And finally, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, well, the chief, you know, you've already been thanked for, you know, being here a year and stuff. I have to tell you, I've told everybody, you know, we do a annual, you know, of, you know, of the chief, you know, of police. And we hadn't done it in a few years because we didn't have one for the last of the year. So, it was, it was good to be able to do it again.
Progress.
So, thank you for that. The other thing, I have just a question. What happened to the children playing sign that was in my front yard?
That's a good, that's a great question. Someone may have taken it from you, chief?
I'm thinking that maybe somebody hit it with the
Yeah.
Snow plow and just took it.
Yeah, okay. We, we, no, we can, we can look into getting another. I didn't realize that. So, thank you.
Because ever since it went down, no children have been playing in my yard.
Okay, moving on. Great meeting, quick meeting. Again, appreciate counsel being very flexible and working with Joseph Emergency.